All right, thank you everyone. I'd like to welcome everyone to this meeting of the Town Promotion Committee on Wednesday, the 12th of October. Starting at the top of the agenda, I have apologies already recorded from Corinna Huxley, councillor Pat Moore, councillor Ara and councillor Jane Heatherington. Are there any other apologies? Most other people are here. Declarations of interest, are there any declarations of interest? No. Item three, to approve the minutes of the ordinary meeting of the Town Promotion Committee held on the 22nd of June as a true record. Can I have a proposal in a second?
I'll propose that, yeah.
And a seconda, anyone?
Okay.
Councillor Green, thank you. Item four. Oh, sorry. I've just been suitably reminded. Is everyone in favour? Thank you. Apologies. I'm very aware that we have a long agenda and we want to get through it. So, item four, working groups. One, to consider and approve the amended Active Ramsgate Working Group terms of reference. I've got Eileen down as presenting this one, please.
So, before you have the Active Ramsgate Working Group.
Put it again.
Terms of reference.
Terms of reference. There's just two tiny changes. The group will focus on 70/30 on promoting active initiatives to visitors and local residents. And the other amendment is to put tourism manager from Santic District Council, brackets, that's Paula Harbage or a nominee. Those are the only changes to those terms of reference, just for you two.
I think there's one other change than that, you're proposing a different chair.
What do you mean?
Previously Cheryl chaired it.
That was agreed at the last time that the Active Ramsgate Working Group terms of reference were agreed, the two changes subsequent to that. So, the changing chair was agreed at the previous meeting.
Okay. I would be inclined to suggest, if I may, that the chair remains the same. The chair is the Chair of Town Promotion, but as it ran before, Cheryl chaired the online meetings. She didn't chair the group. You and I have discussed this.
Obviously, it sounds.
Anyway, either way, it doesn't matter because you're chairing it and that's what it should be.
Sounds as though there might have been a little bit of uncertainty about who's the chair in that case. Is that all right, councillor Green? You're happy with that?
With the response.
With the response?
Yes.
So, did I get a proposal and a seconda for that?
I'll propose.
Second. Everyone agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. To those changes. Working groups. Item two, to consider and approve the draft Open Public Spaces Strategy Group terms of reference. The Chair, Vice Chair and members need to be confirmed as well. So, you have before you the paper-headed Open Spaces, Open Public Spaces Strategy Group. This is the motion that was agreed at the previous full council. And so, it's the strategies group we met is to oversee and implement the motion for council on 31st of August 22. Does anyone want me to read it or are you happy? What's here? Okay. So, the membership, the chairmanship in the quorum is two elected members from Ramsgate Town Council, two members of the community. The supervisor technician, town promoter and other representatives and experts may be invited to attend meetings as required. So, the Chair is also going to be from amongst that, to be appointed by the Town Promotion Committee and should be either a town councillor or an officer of the council. Are you, I mean, are people happy for me or the Chair of Town Promotion, whoever that is, me at the moment, to be the Chair of this strategy group?
Yeah.
Thank you. And is there anyone else who would like to be on that strategy group?
What would it entail?
Sorry?
What would it entail?
The main part is that the strategy group is going to work with the supervisor technician to help them implement the overall coordination of the implementation of the taking over the open spaces. I'm going to do this in as few words as I can because otherwise it gets a bit long-winded. But it's, in the first instance, it's not, it's on the back here. The terms of reference are to undertake and maintain an audit of all open spaces. That would be the first part. And then work with, by liaising with existing volunteer groups to try and increase the number of volunteers and increase the amount of support we give to the volunteers without taking over what they do, because that was something that was asked at full council. And then identify the areas that are not covered by the volunteer groups where Ramsgate Town Council could take over the grounds maintenance. So, it's really working with the town promoter and the supervisor technician on developing those areas. And then eventually, the thinking behind this is, as you will see here, somewhere on there, it should be, but it says for three years.
That's on the back.
On the back. Yeah, that's it, there it is, thank you. By the end of that period of time, I would hope that this would be completely being taken over and run by the supervisor technician. And that's, or if not, at the very least, it would need to be reviewed as to whether or not the strategy group continued. So, it's looking at what do we do next? And also working with the officers of the council about service level agreements and things like that. So, that's what the strategy group is going to be doing, is supporting Chris and Rebecca in their roles in implementing this. Councillor Green.
Because it's going to be using staff time and budgets, I would like to volunteer to be on it as Chair of F and GP.
Absolutely, go on.
Chair.
Sorry.
Thank you very much. This may have been covered at the meeting, I've missed, I'm sorry, I've missed a few. Two things, if I may, the quorum.
Yep.
Is there any way the quorum could be a minimum of one, one-on-one rather than three?
Yeah, I think so.
If, for example, you get two councillors and the technician, the volunteer sector has then been cut out and that would be the last thing we would want to do, for people to start thinking, well, they're just doing their own thing. So, I've just.
Thank you, councillor Piper.
It should be a minimum of one, one.
I'm getting lots of nods around the table, so I think that's agreed.
That makes sense.
Enough. I mean, the number of elected members from the council is suggested at two as a minimum. I don't know if any, sorry councillor Wing.
I mean, we've got a climate strategy group meeting next week and one of the things I was tasked to look at was TPOs. But after researching quite a lot, I actually decided what we actually need is a biodiversity strategy. And I've briefly sort of created a document that looks at what we might possibly be doing in terms of creating our own biodiversity strategy. And a lot of it crosses over here, especially the initial mapping of our area. So, I would like to come on the group, but I mean, I think the five monthly meetings are going to be quite difficult. So, I would like to sit on the group, but I'm a volunteer anyway, but I'd like to sit on that group to be the direct link to what might be happening in the climate group so that we're not doubling up on work, that we're helping each other out in areas where we can help each other out, particularly the mapping of the area.
Okay. I was just going to suggest something, before councillor Green volunteered, I was going to suggest that it might be sensible to have in the document that we would try to have those two councillors, perhaps at least one of them from one of the outlying wards, so it's not town centre and seafront focused. And actually, as councillor Green wanted, that works well. But perhaps writing that into the spec could be useful.
And my second one, Chair, if I may.
Oh, sorry.
No, it's okay. I see that the aim is for the chief technician to take over and run that operation. I choose my words carefully, but presumably planning the meeting, coming up with policies and ideas, then he reports to the council and the council decides, yea or nay. It's not going to be a question of that group running, as it were, their own affairs.
No.
Because it involves finances and budget and all sorts of things like that.
I think in, I mean, this is obviously something that's very new and just coming in, so it is open to a lot of discussion. But I think the first instance is, it's going to take a little bit of time doing the audit and developing the volunteer groups and then identifying the areas where we can take over. Now, I know that already we are doing some work in some areas where there are, like areas that we work where it's KCC owned. And correct me if I'm wrong, but we actually get a small amount of income from them to do that work on their behalf, to look after those grounds.
My problem.
So, if we can develop those, those are all the things that will be done in the background. But for any major increases, and councillor Green's already referred to about costing, any major increase around that will need, obviously, to go to finance and general purposes. So, now, I've got councillor Austin, you already, no, no, I'm just nodding and, all right, so councillor Green.
I'm just a bit cautious about tying the quorum to having a member of the community there. This is, this is work that the council, I assume, can get on with. And I'd hate to think that this group couldn't meet. I mean, we haven't got any members of the community at the moment, I assume.
So.
This group couldn't meet without a member of the community.
How do you feel about that, councillor Piper?
It was simply just wanting to keep the community volunteers on board in the loop so that they feel very much a part of what we're doing, that's all. It was just a suggestion. If they can't come, and you can't order volunteers to attend meetings, but if they can't come, they can't come, but they need to be offered the.
I mean, I agree, we want them there.
Yeah.
But just making it part of the quorum is difficult.
Okay, maybe come back to that. Councillor Wing.
I think we could be setting ourselves up to fail in terms of only two members of the community as our maximum. I mean, and certainly given that, I believe, the vast majority of our gardening is actually done by volunteers and not by our own town council, I think to limit the members of the community to two, A, is not representative of the work they do and B, is going to hammer you when you need one of them present. I would suggest we, I mean, in the climate working group, we agreed that anybody could come along, didn't we, I think? Because I think the one, what we're doing is we're trying to encourage volunteers to take over, to pick up the slack and continue what they're doing. But we're not recognising that value because we've set a maximum of two. So, we're not, I don't feel the numbers are representative of what volunteers are actually doing out in the community.
Okay, can I come back, can we hold that one for a minute? Sorry, councillor Young.
Excuse me. I already attend the committee meetings on the West Cliff. And so, I'm aware that most of the volunteers are quite elderly. And it would be good if we could get some fresh blood, young people are a bit fitter. If there was some way that he could promote that.
Right. Okay.
I think we should help out.
If I can come back briefly on some of these things, it's worded as two members of the community. It doesn't necessarily have to be volunteer gardeners. And so far, we've had one discussion group just to write this. And at that discussion group, my view was that it should be supervisor technician and the town promoter who would have a lot of say in who was invited to be the members of the community, because who can provide them with the support that they need and the advice that they need? So, I think, Rebecca, you remember that conversation along those lines? And we did look at not just volunteers, but it might be volunteers, it might be other people who are not specifically staff or councillors. So, that's why I wanted to hold on to what was being said over here. I don't know if the supervisor technician and the town promoter have had a chance to consider that or not further and have come up with any ideas or names on the spot, Rebecca?
No, but there are obvious ones, the larger groups, because there's more people to represent. I would say this is about acknowledging that we've got these amazing volunteers and we want to compliment and fill in the gaps that they clearly can't manage and they've made it possible for us to even consider this because they do so much great work. So, it's, we don't want them to feel that it's, we're interfering with what they do because volunteers do not like that for a start, and rightly so because of the work they do.
I mean, I'm more than happy to take the word maximum out of there.
Yeah.
But that's not a problem. The only thing I would say, I've got two here, the only thing I would say is that if this group gets too big, it becomes unwieldy and achieves nothing. And my main thinking about the people in it is that it's who can be the most constructive use as far as this council is concerned to actually get this up and running. And so, I do think it needs to be relatively small so it can be positive. But there is also at bottom, other representatives and experts may be invited to attend meetings to fill in those gaps I think we're talking about here. So, now, I've got you next, but first councillor Green.
Well, as I read the terms of reference, this group would not be able to commit any of the council's resources to this.
Not ask permission, Quin.
It will have to come back to this committee to commit any resources. So, on that basis, I think I agree with councillor Wing. I would be happy to see any number of community representatives.
I don't think you're going to be swamped.
No, not, that's, that's fine.
Monthly meetings, that's what I was going to say, if you're meeting very frequently, most volunteers won't be able to manage that, so.
It's the month, I think, if we come back to the monthly meetings, but monthly meetings was an initial setup just to get it up and running and then it can drop, I would see it dropping down into something more manageable. But the first part, which is the audit and getting the liaising done with the volunteer groups is quite an intensive work to start with. And that's why it was set up to make, I was only going to have it every three, first three or four months and someone else suggested it was six months and I thought, okay, if you're up for that, we'll go with it. But it could even, you know, once it's going, we may say, well, actually, we don't need to meet so often, we can easily drop it down. But yes, you're right, volunteers, sorry councillor Orban.
Chair, thank you. I think with all this discussion, it comes down to the terms of reference on the front of the page there, where it actually says, once approved, can be amended as requested by the group, by the Town Promotion Committee. So, I think, my personal view is, you set up with what you've got or what's just been agreed here and then you see how that goes and you can either add to it or take away from it. But I mean, that's just not, that just makes sense, that's exactly what it says on the.
Just to be clear then, Chair, that it wasn't a formal proposal that we had one-on-one in, which was just a night to discuss. I'm quite happy to withdraw that and go on with councillor Arden suggesting it.
All right, and I think councillor Austin, did you want to say?
No.
Okay. So, can I have a, you've got a proposed, any seconda for that? Okay, thank you very much.
We all in favour?
All in favour. Oh, no, in favour. Have a good night, have I? You're all right, thank you. Right. Over item five, Active Ramsgate Meetings, to receive and note the minutes from the previous Active Ramsgate Meetings. And I'm going to Eileen to do this then. Okay, you've got the minutes from the 28th of July, meeting of Active Ramsgate Working Group, and the minutes from the 30th of September. Do you want to take those individually? They are literally just the minutes. Yeah. I mean, does anyone have, anyone have any queries or questions over the Active Ramsgate Working Group minutes?
I suppose we accept them, Chair.
Certainly do.
Certainly do, okay, thank you.
All those in favour?
Sorry, all those in favour? This is going to go down as a meeting with no all those in favour, isn't it? Ah, dear, thank you. Item seven, Community Ad Update, to receive a report. Can I?
Item six.
Oh, sorry, item six. Sorry. Rebecca, to receive written report, town promoter regarding proposals and recommendations for promotion of the town.
So, this is in response to the last meeting. And I went away and found out some prices, but I've listed it slightly differently, as you'll see, mentioning the four priorities that businesses and residents most frequently complain about, as suggested in the one-day report and the We Made That Report to the most recent consultations. And the detractors from the town centre include parking charges, cleanliness and poor public realm, ill welcome, loss of weekly market and the antisocial behaviour or feeling safe. And I've broken that down, I don't know if you want me to read it as you've all got the report in front of you, but know we've got.
Take them in turns, Chair.
So. So, the recommendation to the committee is to ask whether you would like to consider the funding of the free park as an initiative that we could investigate further. And that's on the back of something we did several years ago that was stopped when the cost went from £10,000 to £15,000 with TDC. And that was an offer of free parking on Saturdays at the multi-story car park.
So, councillor Green, I know you were first.
I would oppose RTC putting any money into that car park while it's run by TDC. Because it's just appalling. And despite promises from the highest level, it doesn't seem to be improved for any length of time. If somebody else like this local agent that you talk about takes it over, then I would be interested in helping them initially make a proper job of it.
Did you have your hand up?
I did, I am.
Councillor Orban.
Thank you. I'm in agreement with councillor Green about paying for parking for RTC until such time as something is done by the current leaseholder, TDC, in relation to the multi-story car park, because that is the only place they would allow you to have our free park and if that is what the council decides it wants to do. I would say, as I know, I've got a question on council on the tomorrow night relating to the car park. It's disgusting, we all know it's disgusting. The one in Margate is disgusting as well. So, I've asked, I've got a question there tomorrow night about what they're going to do about it and subsequent question afterwards in relation to the lease of that building is due to end in the next two years, I think. The council then has to decide, is it going to continue with the lease of that car park? The likelihood is, I would say, that they would because it is a repair lease and so far the lifts, the lifts are costing £300,000 to replace and there's no way that we would want to take that on with that amount. And also, the car park has got concrete cancer in some parts of it which need to be repaired. So, that's quite a lot of money. Then I think the lighting is totally inadequate, the whole feel of the place is crap, you know, and as I've said to the, to the cabinet member, you know, when I parked in the Margate one, I felt like I wanted to take my car straight out of there, I just didn't want to leave my car in there. It just has a dull, it's horrible for our residents and it's for Ramsgate and it's horrible for our visitors to come in there. So, the other thing I would say as well is in relation to parking charges, the council, the current administration are looking at car parking charges already in relation to the budget which needs to come in. So, my view is that they are likely to put the parking charges up because the government will not give local authorities any money and therefore they've got to find money from somewhere and that is likely to happen. So, my view, maybe for slightly different reasons for councillor Green, is I will not be bringing my barge pole in order to touch the multi-story car park. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor.
I also agree, but for other different reasons. Your motion was put, I mean, I've got a whole series of residents up there that keep asking me about parking, a lot of them. And we obviously wanted to trigger a petition, which I think wouldn't take long to get to the required number, but we decided on a motion first of all, which we obviously supported. And out of that motion, which was one maybe three or four months ago, a whole parking review was meant to be undertaken particularly of the coastal towns where we have particular problems. And I did ask David Saunders, councillor Saunders, who's leading on this, for an update a couple of months ago and nothing's, I hadn't heard anything since. He said they were waiting to appoint somebody, so goodness, what they're doing. But your update is that they're hoping to get this all crap smashed out before Christmas. I don't know how they're going to engage with the stakeholders and particularly residents who have a number of concerns. I too have a parking-related question on Thursday night that was initially rejected for being similar to Ruth's in Broadstairs, but I fought back. Mine's on EV charging points, which is another major concern that links in with our whole offer for tourists, but also for our own residents who want to buy electric cars. So, in my response, I too will be bringing up the parking review and asking, when is it going to start? And also councillor Saunders, if you remember, offered me a place on that review, so I will be chasing that as well. So, I would hang fire because we've got other things in the park.
Definitely.
If I can just add a bit of information in here, I was at the Fees and Charges Cabinet Advisory Group only a few days ago and the subject of the car park at Leopold Street came up and I asked, and I commented about when the lease is due up. And I can't remember the exact date, but it's actually not due up until the 2070s. What's coming up in, what's coming up in two years' time in 2024 is the option to buy. So, it's not, so it's 2024 or something.
Thank you, Gavin Waite, for that information that you gave me, yes, thank you.
Well, and as councillor Young has already said, they are hoping to get this parking review sorted out and done in time to be able to take into account the outcome of it in deciding the fees and charges on parking. I think it's a very big ask, but anyway. So, do I have a proposal to refuse or accept this recommendation?
Refuse, refuse, Chair.
Seconda? Okay, everyone in favour? Thank you.
I'm going to abstain because I think you've just made it, but I didn't get my motion passed enough, so I'm going to abstain.
Okay.
I'm abstaining too.
Just to segue into cleanliness and we're, because we're talking about the car park again. And just briefly on the car park, we have been informed that, oh, I've continually asked about what the clean parks contractors are.
continually asked about what the clean parks contractors are doing in the car park. And again, I've chased it this week twice in the hope that I'd have an answer for you this evening, but unfortunately that hasn't come through. But we understand that clean parks are contracted to clean the, the car park once a year with potential, uh, six monthly extra clean, and we don't know if any other cleaning is taking place. That hasn't been confirmed or denied. Um, but, so, so looking at cleanliness, um, in my previous report, uh, back in June, I, I suggested about setting up a town centre working group, um, and at that point we talked about perhaps having representatives from other councils. But, um, as I say here, in the spirit of sometimes you just need to get on and do, it, it might be a better solution to have representatives from East Cliff and Central Harbour councillors, technicians, town clerk and myself on that, that group, so we can sort of hard, work together to, to come up with a strategy going forward, um, and, and the, the recommendation is that we consider whether to progress with that idea and the facelift Thursday project, which may become a facelift fortnight project, or such other alterations.
Councillor, next one.
Um, just a, back, uh, beginning of summer last year, when it was like, you know, the welcome back fund was coming in. The idea was that that would be used to clean the High Street, and we at the time said, wouldn't it be nice if we actually got allocated the money for Ramsgate rather than being a generic thing? Because you know that it's just going to be one company coming in, bit of a clean sweep and go, whereas if we had it, we could actually do quite a lot with it. Did that ever come to fruition? Did that money ever come to Ramsgate? I don't believe it did, but tell me I'm wrong.
Yeah.
Yes.
Um, we've also chased this up.
Yeah.
Yep.
And Maria, and, um, we're getting nowhere, getting, we've got no answers to, you know, when is this money going to be spent? Ramsgate, because I asked the question, I want, you know, it would be great if Jeff washed all the, the High Street down and the Queen Street, Harbour Street, take all the graffiti off, take all the posts, the bare posts off, clean, you know, down and bottom and, and do all of that. And that is what the money was supposed to be for, but it doesn't seem to have arrived from central government.
Right, okay.
That's, that's what I believe.
Thank you, and that's, that's what I, I was led to believe up until a while ago, when I, when I was hearing that it was going to be coming from central government soon, and even that was about six months ago. So I'm not proposing anything, because I mean, I mean, I think we're all around this table, we're all loathe to do things that TDC should be doing, but, but looking at the, you know, proposal of sort of like giving money for parking charges, rest of it, I have to say, I would prefer the council to be giving money to, to some contractor to go around and actually clean this place up to make it look better rather than the parking, and, and like, again, that's doing TDC's work for them. I'm not, so I'm not proposing that, but that's why I would just ask about the welcome back fund first.
Councillor Green.
I like the idea of facelift Thursday because it would put a limit on the amount of resources that we're putting into this. And it would be obvious to the public that this, what's going on on Thursday is us doing it.
Yes.
But quite how much resource we could put into it, I think, is something we need a detailed discussion about with the town clerk and the, and the technicians.
Councillor Austin, I saw first, um.
This is the kind of thing that we could again engage volunteers in, and then we already have the mayor doing once a month uh, litter Thursday, so that, that's established and she has a regular, okay, small group of volunteers, but with extra people joining on occasions, so there are opportunities there to, to link this in with community groups and to get more people. I'm not saying obviously that they should be doing the technical jobs, but there's all sorts of things that volunteers could help with and would be keen to help with, I think, and we could publicise that as councillor Green says, as this is what your council is doing. And this is, you know, this is how members of the community are helping.
Councillor.
Uh, I mean, I think, I, I've been, I've been a facelift Thursday is a good idea because in big green week, I mean, we had two big, two big things where we did both Cavendish Car Park and, uh,
Cannon Road.
Cannon Road Car Park, and we've had some outcomes with TDC, and the reason we managed to move so much on in one event was because we had RTC and TDC working a long time, side volunteers. And then I went and we just targeted the Eagle Pub. Uh, we, we did a ninety minute makeover outside the Eagle Pub and reported the building and also of Corn Hill, which is terrible up by me, always terrible, so I think it, it, I, I like the idea of creating something that people can buy into, and certainly there is a great deal of feedback from uh, the volunteers, certainly that I worked with, that when we're all in it together, it, it's, it just seems easier to do stuff, and when you've got TDC and RTC to pick up the big items and get rid of the bags, you see instant change in the areas you're dealing with. So I'm, I'm all in favour of, uh, a regular initiative.
Councillor Orban.
Yeah, I'd, I'd just like to say that, um, myself and the town clerk have written to the chief executive of Thuny District Council, um, and the leader and cabinet members, um, mainly in response, mainly in relation to that, um, they are not listening. And we get no response from officers, so we've requested a meeting with the current interim ch- chief executive, and I think all this, all what we're talking about here, this is all part of it, all part and parcel of it, to, to ensure that we get some kind of plan of working together with TDC. Because I think it's important, when we're talking about cleaning or, or, or whatever, the, the, the streets or whatever, don't forget, you know, we need to get consent and we need to ensure that we're covered, um, et cetera, et cetera, if we do it. Um, so I think it's, that's the type of thing that we need to get in first with, with the chief executive and to get, and to get, um, some actual conversation going and act, and get them to actually agree to do something. Because I'm pretty damn sure if, 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 if it was Broadstairs, then I, I am sure that there will be action taken. So I think that, that's an important part, I think that we need to ensure that, that we, that I, I will certainly ensure that myself and the town clerk will uh, follow that up to, to, to get that going, but I just thought it was important to tell you that we have started that conversation, and, and if not, then I'll, I, I don't know what we can do if we don't get anywhere with it.
I've got two more hands that I've had up, councillor Austin.
I just wanted to highlight a couple of things there in relation to what councillor Orban said. The first one is that, um, the overview and scrutiny committee at, at TDC has set up a working group under the chairmanship of councillor Curry, looking at working more effectively with town and parish councils. I suspect that some of the motivation for that was about what things can we shed that town and parish councils can pick up? But actually, some good ideas came through from the previous work that we did on coastal cleanliness and beach cleaning and so on. And town and parish councils were saying, there is more we can do together if we are talking to each other. And I think that, you know, that, that reinforces, there is work going on there. The other thing is that the new environmental services manager, Mark Greening, who was here the other day at the litter forum meeting, which he attends regularly, um, was saying that, we know he's set up regular meetings with, um, the town clerk, the town promoter, he was, he was apologising that he's very keen to get those going again, and obviously much of this comes under his remit. And he is quite keen to look at how he can talk more to, uh, town and parish councils and work more closely with them. And he seems motivated to do a better job, uh, by doing that than, than previously. But obviously he's got a bit of a mountain to climb looking at, uh, all the issues that we have.
Councillor Young.
I was wondering how much money actually goes into the coffers from the, um, car parking in the town? You know, because people pay a lot of money to park in the multi-story. And when it's in such an awful condition, I went down under the road last week and it was, it was awful, it's just absolutely awful.
Okay, I, I do know, and I, I don't know whether or not I can say the figure, so I'm not going to. Um, but I do know that the income from Staffordshire Street car park is greater than the income from Leopold Street, even though Leopold Street. And we found that out last year through the fees and charges CAG, because we, I raised that with you.
Yes.
Yeah, um, I, I don't want to say what the actual figures are, but Stafford Street has a higher revenue turnover than Leopold Street, and that's why they will only let us, I think that's probably a contributory factor as to why they, they don't want us to have free parking in Stafford Street, but it, it's one of the other ones. Um, but I, if I may, I would like to ask one question, um. The only thing that I, I just want to check with facelift Thursday is, is there any risk that that would take away? If we're focusing staff time down into facelift Thursday, would that have a knock-on effect of anything else that happens, might happen on a Thursday?
It, it's not generally a day where they have something that's regular, it isn't one of those sort of ad hoc days or things that they, they've picked up
Yeah.
through the week. Um, the idea, as, as it is, it's just to have that focus and if, if it's concentrated on one day, I think more people will notice it, and there's also an opportunity, so, for example, today I've contacted Melz and Bar about property there that's just been bought and then left in a sort of half, literally a half painted state, and really they're going to be better doing absolutely nothing than what they've done. And, and they were very good, they agreed and they've immediately gone back to that new owner who's, who's local and said to them, you know, if you need to sort out. So it's having that, those opportunities, for example, as well as the actual impact on, on, on the vis, the visuals for everybody.
I was, I, what I was going to say was, we've done quite a lot on this, unless there's anything new to add, I've got to, I was going to ask if we could move into making decisions, is that what you meant to say? Did you have?
I'd just like to add, but I think councillor Piper's before me.
Thank you, I was only going to pick up on what you were saying, we were discussing technicians getting involved with, uh, volunteers and people, there's got to be time in the calendar for them to actually carry out that stuff, uh, which was just a couple of items ago, so I'm just picking up on what you said, we need to be careful we don't block out the calendar so they haven't actually got time to do any of the projects we're asking them to do.
I, I, I think one of the advantages of having a regular Thursday is that my perspective from a volunteer that does go out and do, and, and I think we, we've got a little chance to hit some grot spots as well together, is that I know I'm, I'm going to wait for a Thursday to hit that grot spot rather than try and approach Laura and say, we've got we've got something going on, come and get it done as soon as possible on Monday, so I think it would focus people's attention on that particular day, so it probably will help staff out.
It's a nice, it's a nice catch, it's a nice catchy phrase, we have a proposal, I'll second it.
What was the, what was, no, what was?
But we, uh, the, uh, progress with the facelift Thursday project as detailed above.
Yep.
Do you want to tier it thus as well?
Do, I mean, just, just a bit of caution, I mean, I don't think we've got the capacity to do it at the moment. It's my personal view, knowing the staff that we've got, that we would have to employ somebody to do it. Now, that shouldn't stop us, but I think that's the reality. I, I personally support the idea. But we've got to go into it with our eyes open.
Yeah.
You've got six months.
Would you be happy with that?
Well, what are we going to do in six months?
A recommendation.
Who, who's going to do it?
You have a proposal. Yeah, we have, we have a proposal to say whether or not, uh, would to say that we would like to progress with the facelift Thursday project as detailed above. Um, and that's from councillor Orban, do I have a second up for that?
You've already seconded it, you've already seconded it.
Oh, I already seconded it, sorry, sorry. Um, and.
I'd like to propose an amendment, that that, do we agree that? Subject to a review of the, of our capacity to implement it.
I, I don't see any reason to do that myself, but.
I, I, I believe it will, I, I believe our staff are already doing that, but in an ad hoc way, where they're pulled on a Monday or a Tuesday or a Wednesday. What we're doing is we're focusing it down to a particular day of the week, and because we're focusing it down into a particular day of the week, you'll have volunteers that may well come on board to support Rams, our, our technician, so you might end up with more work being done because there's more people.
Councillor Piper.
Chair, thank you very much, for the purposes of being able to vote on the amendment, can I second councillor Green's amendment?
Yeah.
So the council can be asked to consider it.
Right.
And, and consider the outcome.
So, in that case, can we vote on the amendment, please? Who agrees with the amendment?
I can see the, I don't see a problem.
Yeah, okay.
It won't, it won't deter, right?
Anyone against? And the rest abstain, so that's carried.
That's carried, okay.
Okay, so, um, we have the motion with the amendment to accept, to progress with facelift Thursday, uh, with a review in six months. Who's in favour? Anyone against? Abstain. There is one other thing within this, um, uh, and that is about a town centre working group. If, does anyone want to, do you want to comment on that first?
Um, it's just obviously the town centre is split almost down the middle from Harbour up to the High Street between Central Harbour and East Hill, so, um, the suggestion I put forward as an amendment to the last report was that we just had the focus of town council representatives to meet at those wards and, um, technician, myself and the town clerk, and that way we can.
Could I suggest, we already meet, as, the, the two wards already meet roughly every six to eight weeks anyway, um, because of, of the, the, the town centre issues where we, we have the same problems and so my inclination is to actually, we include that in our regular discussions, would that be sufficient? And Rebecca.
So it could be that we have a half an hour at the end of your meeting, um, that where we can just get together and talk about the.
Would that be sufficient to, to meet your, it, it wouldn't be a formal working group? Because our meetings are, are less formal than that. But would you be happy with that?
I think we can address it to the town clerk, if you can, the district, and the technician.
Okay, so is everyone happy if we take that away as, as to, to look at, because we do already meet?
Yes.
Um, and we can incorporate, um, the town promoter into that. Okay, um, next one is the weekly market.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Uh, I, I don't think there's a lot to be said until such time as TDC gets off its arse and, uh, and, and gets something done. I don't think there's too much that we can actually say.
The proposed market in Charlotte Court and, or, um, Radford House is already council policy, we just need to get on with it.
We do have one at, at Charlotte Court this month, on the twenty ninth. Um, and also, sorry, through the chair, um, Radford House hopefully will be available towards, well, the beginning of November, that.
So this, this is, this isn't about the weekly market in the High Street. This is about Charlotte Court and Radford House, which is.
No, this, this, this was just to note the information that we're, we're still progressing.
I think that's.
Can I, I'm going to say, councillor Orban sort of like says, you know, until TDC do something, could we just have a quick recap of where we are with TDC, just because we're, I'm assuming we're not, but I just wondered if there's anything else.
We'd like, we'd like to, we'd like to know as well, um, yeah, that's. The most recent, the most recent information we have about the market is that, um, they, have they included a new member of staff who's going to, to run with it?
Yes.
Yes, the states have got a new member of staff, um, who is going to be taking this forward. Um, we don't know who they are, um, we haven't had any communication with them, so we don't know anything about what they're. Um, we don't know who they are, um, we haven't had any communication with them, so we don't know anything about what they're doing. Um, we haven't, we don't know yet whether or not they have completed the legal processes that were agreed at cabinet, which is to set up the licence situation um as far as street walking is concerned. Um, um, but only once that is done, do I, as far as I know, is the next stage of actually putting it out to tender. Um and so far, Ramsgate Town Council have still not had any official or formal response from TDC to their expression of interest to the pin from last February.
Thank you, so there's two reasons I ask this, one because I wanted it on record, because we get asked an awful lot about this and it goes all over social media, and now I'll appoint people to the fact that you've just explained that so people could watch it if they wanted to, because I think that's really important. And I think we almost need to make a press release or something, because people talk about this, understandably, they're frustrated time and time again on social media. So I really would like it if if RTC could publish this this information, that you know, that summary that you've just said, for for public to be able to access and read. And the other thing is, which now I've just completely gone from my mind, is, um, oh, do, are we in the same position as other towns, or is it just Ramsgate again, just out of interest? Does Broadstairs have a market, does Mar- Gate have a market, does Westgate, anybody else, is it just ours?
Uh, I I think we are the only town that had a weekly market anyway, uh, within the the main of towns of Fannet, I'm not sure, I don't even think Burchington did it.
No.
No, no, I think, I think we are the only town that had a a town centre market in that way.
Cliff and everyone has their farmers market, haven't they?
Yeah, yes, yes, that's the one.
It's not the same, it's not.
That's more like now Charlotte Court market, isn't it?
Yes, regarding, regarding the 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 suggestion from councillor Nixie, are you, you as chair of council happy to take that up with, um, town clerk?
Yeah, Laura and I will, I mean, again, again, that's on, that is on the list uh to speak to Colin Carmichael there.
And and and, and I mean, thank you, Chair, for doing that, and just to let you know, all the time as I was chair, I wrote to Madeline Homer regularly.
I have no doubt, Anne Marie.
Everything about we were being ignored, about the markets, I've got reams of emails, and of course then Madeline, you know, went her merry way, and so you're starting this again, and I appreciate that, but I mean, you you're more than welcome to explain that this has been going on all my time as chair as well, it wasn't like I was just waiting back to hear from something. It was constantly pushing this thing.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And we had discussions with, um, Madeline Homer as well, and, uh, it, nothing happened, um, so that's the current situation.
The council and the cabinet, haven't we?
Okay.
Just banging off an email, you're copying me.
Okay, uh, antisocial behaviour, um, it's to note the information and consider if there are any further steps officers can currently take.
Yes, um, there has been an update since writing this report on the bin storage facilities, which were considered a really important part of the Safer Streets Fund, because they are somewhere where we see a lot of antisocial behaviour, particularly around Cavendish Street. And unfortunately, the latest on that initiative is that it's not happening. And we're not going to get bin stores, um, so um, which was, uh, in the litter for, and we were given that information at the beginning of the week, which councillor Austin. There are other actions, aren't there?
Uh, can, find bring councillor Austin in.
So the, the reason that the bin stores as proposed in places like Cavendish Street are not going to happen, I don't know what's happening with other places, but this Cavendish Street particularly we talked about, is that we have commercial bins on TDC land, which is not where they should be, commercial bins should be in or or, uh, uh associated with the premises of the business they belong to. You will recall, Eastwood councils in particular, the furor that we had over the, um, Albion House bins outside the Eastwood lift for a long time, until Albion House were persuaded to obtain smaller bins that could be lifted up and down from their cellar, et cetera. So the, uh, Mark, the new environmental services manager, is very keen to establish as a principle with businesses, that they are responsible for having a commercial waste licence, but they're also having bins that are of a manageable size, that they can actually store them within the curtilage of their own property. And most particularly, he's concerned to get rid of the bins in Cavendish Street because they are a source of, uh, environmental danger and antisocial behaviour. So we are quite keen going on from there, if that can be established, to look at other places in town where there are commercial bins kicking around um on the footway, et cetera, et cetera, where they could in fact be inside the building or inside the curtilage of of a a business, and to look at that as a general principle to to as part of beautification and keeping our streets tidy and accessible to to pedestrians.
Which moves us, I think, onto the next item in a minute, um.
Thank, Chair, yeah, I'd, I'd, I'd totally agree with councillor Austin, um. That's always been a particularly poor area, it's never looked after, it's never anything like that. The question I was going to ask, or did did I ask, is it absolutely clear that it is Tannet District Council's?
Yes, except immediately behind the charity shop, which belongs to them, and there were there was talk of how that would be located and.
And is that where the bin should be?
The the bins belonging to the charity shop should be there.
Yeah.
Others, which belong to other neighbouring businesses, should.
But we don't, do we know whose business it's based?
Yes, yes, we do.
On the other side.
We do, we do, yes, yes.
Can I, I've just, can I come to councillor Makinson next, who had a hand up?
Originally, the market had their bins there. So if we do get the market back, where are their bins going to go?
They'll have to have temporary bins, won't they, on the?
Or will we not worry about that until it happens?
That's a while off yet, I think.
We could all be dead on it.
Yeah. Councillor, hold on, I had an interesting extra note to this. We are, we are working with a project which is externally funded, where funding has been brought in to do something that the environmental services team say we shouldn't be doing, because it's not actually the legal way of doing it. So we do, once again, have something of an internal communication issue going on uh with our colleagues in Tannet District Council, because the right hand does not appear to know what the left hand is doing, and that's not helping any of us. Okay, can I, can we?
Sorry, Chair, can I, can I just say that I, I, what I don't understand is if we've got private businesses using Tannet District Council's land to put their bins on and create a mess, what are Tannet District Council doing? Are they not telling them, get your bins off our land, or else we're going to take them away, or we're going to do?
Well, that's what is planned now.
I think they've become aware of it. I think, I think they've become aware of it, and it's now actually about dress, so it does appear to have been in oversight for some time, um.
I apologize that I wasn't at the meeting, I meant to be, but now there is a history of people dumping their stuff there.
Yes.
I don't think that will go away, and I have no idea.
It will need improvement, we had, I'll, I'll be near minutes, but we had a long discussion about various places.
Okay, can we, can we take this outside, because this is where, heading into the realms of the senior, not RTC.
Yeah.
Um, the request here is just to note this information and consider if there are any further steps officers can currently take, I think, um, the, there are no immediate steps, we've got Face of Thursday, which we've just agreed, um, which I think ties in with that, um. If everyone's happy with noting that information, is that, you're okay with that? Thank you. Right, we mentioned beautification just now, um, so we are in, we are really actually into beautifica-, I like that phrase, I'm sorry, I know some people don't, I like it. Um, but.
As you basically, I I'm not so keen, and I put it improvements, so beautification. Um, so these are some of the projects that we talked about last time, sorry, um.
So is there something you wanted to come in on, councillor?
I was going to ask what the cultural consortium was.
All right.
Why don't, I know that.
Because you're part of it. Um, yes, so the culture consortium is, um, a, a, a group of people that, and this is born out of the heritage action zone status, and this is a two year project, um, with a small amount of funding, look up ways of increasing the legacy of, um, heritage, the heri- heritage action zone, uh, five year strategy, um, with cultural initiatives, so there'll be things that celebrate our historic High Street.
And who, who, who's on this consortium?
So it was, people were invited to apply, and it's led by a project officer that's just employed for three days a month by TDC, and she's got a strong, um, background in community arts. Uh, Lucia Tanner, who you will know as the project officer for the Historic High Street Fund. And then there are creatives, uh, such as, uh, Susie Humphries, um, Sabina Vizia, uh, several people, I think there's five others, Nikki Hildersley, um, who's Discovery Planet, so there's, it's a broad.
So, so it's got no democratic legitimacy at all?
They've, they've got a small amount of funding, it's around fifty thousand pound, and what's happening with that is they're going to put uh, uh, various projects around creative ways of celebrating the High Street, which could be an event, it could be some uh, public art, it could be around branding, co- coming up with colours of Ramsgate, um, it, uh, uh, as I said, could be wall art, um, and ways to celebrate the the marketplace, as it, all across, going back even further, apparently it was called the soul, um. Holding regular events, which could even be, um, markets. Um, and there's around, as I said, it's going to be possibly five projects that will go on the Kent Business Portal for, that people be invited to tender, and there are opportunities with match funding through Arts Council England to increase the value of that project.
That's the legitimacy of it.
Can I, can I just, um, just can I just say here, when I come to the recommendation for this item, it is actually just to defer the above projects until the colours of Ramsgate have been identified, and it is known what projects are called to. So before we actually get into a debate about what is here, um, do we want to consider whether or not the simple way is that we defer the above projects until some more work is being done? And then we can move on to the next item in the agenda, because otherwise I think we're going to go round a lot here.
Just to, just if I could just answer that very briefly, after all, uh, my understanding anyway, is that any has town has an opportunity to have a consortium art at the end of it, and and that's always, uh, led through creativity and and to celebrate culture in whatever those people want to.
I just want to.
Ramsgate colours are green and gold.
Sorry?
Ramsgate colours are green and gold.
Yeah, uh, we, we had.
Pretty dull, I think.
Yeah, we had that, that discussion, um, Rebecca and I, um.
But it's not, it's not, it's not a matter of discussion, that's what they are.
Yeah, I know.
They might be there, but.
That's council colours, so this is. Um.
I just want people to keep people in the loop, just to know how things get reinvented, I was on this group when it was started off years ago, and was on it for a number of years, with representatives from Margate, Broadstairs and Ramsgate. And we did almost all of this previously, so so we've done this, we've got it noted, it's like, why are we doing this again, almost? Because we, I had, I was on the, I was on it for two, nearly three years, doing all of this, why are we all of a sudden doing it now?
Um, sorry, the the heritage action zone?
This whole, the cultural consortium aspect with TDC and and it's, is exactly what we did as a group.
Interesting to share, the, with Lucia Tanner, who's sort of leading on that branding exercise.
Barely new. Okay, I'm going to come back to where I was, I I think we need to take this away and um, you can do some amazing, um, perhaps with councillor Nixie and others, is everyone okay with that and move on?
Yeah.
Right.
Ask one question, uh, oh, sorry, about your list of four park and churches, antisocial behaviour, et cetera. Do the toilets not?
Cavendish Street.
Peoples, any to- ev- all the toilets. Um, what is happening to them, the one along there has been shut for months. Cavendish Street is obviously shut.
And the. I mean, this, the the toilets in Cavendish Street will take this away from this meeting, because we've got an update on those, they will be opened.
I think, there are plans. Oh, well, I think that's, and for them to be reopened, and it's not on our agenda, so, uh, can we move?
Well, it's part of the antisocial behaviour. Yeah. And the plan that they want to give them to Ramsgate or something, is that not?
Uh, no, we refuse.
We refuse, yes, so they're keeping it.
I don't think we have. We don't know. It's, it's, it's unknown, it's an unknown quantity, I have no idea. Um, sorry, uh, I'd, I'd like to move on to, um, item six two, but first, uh, councillor Green, you.
Well, through you, Chair, could I ask the town promoter what she needs from us to progress the improving the route between the station and the town?
Again, the cultural consortium have have got some funding to tent, to put that out to tender.
We did that, we've done all of that, where is it?
Um, but one of, one of the proposals that will go forward is the one I've started work on, um, and I've planned to work alongside Ramsgate Arts to develop that, if it, if it, if it comes to that, and then there would be match funding of up to ten thousand pound towards that project, but at this point, it's it's not even made it to the the business portal yet, so it had, the 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 actual, um, pick, the, the the tender hasn't been written.
I mean, I think improving that route is really important.
Yeah, and I've got councillor Piper who wanted to come in.
Yeah, thank you, Chair, um, it wasn't that long ago that we paid out for uh, new signage all around the town, and particularly from the station to the harbour room. So it begs the question, why, why are we doing it again? I, I, um.
What happened to the signage?
Yes, it's the way. It, it was through the consultations, such as the one day.
Yeah, sure.
Specifically that one, actually, who, um, who felt that there were, the signage was still quite poor.
All right, okay.
With regards to the welcome and the, and the, the, the more obvious route down to the station, or down, down from the station to the har- uh, harbour via the town centre. And I have to say, I agree with them, because that wasn't the route I wanted to take anyway with the way I'm in, I got voted down.
Okay, okay. Third, third attempt at moving on to item six two?
Yes, so.
You, you've got the floor again.
Thank you, um, so this is a project that I was asked to investigate, um, the installation of festoon lighting around each of the archways, so that would be the, the, the large, the first eighteen, which are the larger ones that all are identical in size, um, in their arch structure, they just have different heights. Um, uh, the, the plan was to, um, have thirty lights on each archway, and they would run for between four and five hours a night, depending on what season we were in, there would also be a ten to twenty minute display, which would reflect either something that's happening within the community, or nationally, or internationally, um. And that, as I say, would last for about ten to twenty minutes. So, uh, working with a light engineer that is known to the town council, um, the quotation for that is attached, um. And then with the extra costs, including things like the application of a road closure, things that we can't do anything about, um. It comes in at around seventeen thousand nine hundred pound, not including VAT. With an ongoing annual cost of around seven hundred, but as I later discovered, there is now an addendum to that, because I transposed some of my figures, so the, the, the one pound twenty eight a night to run the electricity would actually be one pound eighty two, which actually increases the annual cost for electricity at its current rate, uh, to six hundred and sixty four. So I would suggest that the annual running costs would be increased to between eight fifty and nine hundred.
Okay, councillor Nixie.
I'm all for this, I think it's good, I think it's money well spent, so it's going to look.
I'm all for this. I think it's good, I think it's money well spent, I think it's going to look beautiful, it, it'll blend, I'm all for it.
Uh councillor Orban?
Yeah, I absolutely agree with councillor Nicksey, I think this is something that we should do, and I'm, I'm all for it, Jean.
Councillor Green?
Yeah, I agree, but I think we should ask the businesses down there to contribute.
Um, I can't, have you contacted businesses already or?
Some of them are aware of the project when we were looking at it uh previously, although not on this scale, and the most, this was when we were looking at it, it was the safer streets, an opportunity with safer streets, because they needed to do a lighting project, and this ticked the boxes, because one of the areas that was considered dark and perhaps unattractive because of the safety aspect to visitors, um but they decided not to, which is why I've progressed this with actually a better lighting system uh that's more robust, so yes, some of them do, um but it I felt actually before I went to them with this proposal, it would be best to see how council felt about me, me progressing it. Like we have got a meeting, a small business meeting in the arches this month, so if, if, if it is a positive response tonight, then that will be the main thing on the agenda.
I'm not, I'm not sure we can force them to pay, that's the only thing.
No, that's to invite, invite them.
Invite them to pay. Now, I'm not quite sure which hands went up first.
Councillor Piper.
Councillor Piper.
Uh thank you, Chair. Um whilst this is a, a lovely idea, it doesn't mean that we've got to take, if we agree to go with this, it's something that we've got to pay out every year. And I'm sorry to speak on your behalf, Rebecca, and forgive me if I've got this wrong, but Rebecca has spent years trying to get money out of local businesses for anything, and they're very reluctant to pay up, aren't they? And I know we can't force them, but if we take this on board, I just have a feeling that it, it will be totally our responsibility. Um and are we prepared to do that? Because it, the report says that um it will in, increase business, which is great, but then they don't contribute much to it, if anything. Thank you, Chair.
Um councillor Young?
I'm just wondering, um paying for these, the electricity with the way things are going, um there's no talk of solar panels. Do you think we ought to have more in that way up on the town to pay for my electricity, will you?
So we'd have to look at the feasibility of that. I've got councillor Piper next, and then I've got.
Thank you, Chair.
Councillor.
I think, I think as councillor Nicksey said, it's a great idea, but I just wonder whether we can't be a little bit clever here, there's going to be initial setup costs and the fitting and all the rest of it. But I would have thought realistically in terms of bringing business into the area and so on, we're talking about October to Easter. There's no point in having lights on, it don't get dark till ten o'clock between sort of Easter and eleven o'clock, so you don't really need to light the places then, so as a project to run from, say, October to April, I think it's an excellent idea, on the darker nights, keep the streets better lit, and that would do something about the running costs. Evelyn?
Councillor Orban?
Yeah, I'll, just on that, I agree with councillor Piper, I think that's a good idea. Um obviously the structure, the arches are listed, uh belong to TDC, I believe. Um so where is the electricity coming from to light those lights? And of, of Fannick District Council, have you been in contact with, obviously with Fannick District Council, we go, I know you said we're Rob, Rob Brown, but are they not willing to, as it's going to enhance their building? Are, are they not going to, you know?
Bible bluster, you see.
Will they not come in with uh some, some money? I think that's, you know, and we're not talking massive amounts of money here, um but, but they, I, I think that they should put some money to it every year. I think that would be, I think we should ask them for that.
I mean.
Councillor Austin?
First electricity.
The Chair is right, the running costs is not a lot of money, so either TDC or all the businesses surely could.
Yeah.
Cover that.
Councillor Austin?
I was just going to pick up on the solar panels point, because obviously looking at ways that we in electricity is one of the things that we should be doing and looking at through our final change working group etcetera, but it's not something that we can do immediately in that area because of the nature of the listed buildings and whatever, and it's not something we can do quickly. But I definitely think it should be on our agenda.
Councillor Wing?
Uh I mean, I fully agree with this, and I wish we could find some money to do the bloody arches that are on the roadside where the light fitting to hang on at night, I believe that they're part of the same system as well.
Um, well, the one set belongs to, the raw grade ones belong to KCC or the upper ones, as some people describe, and the and the lower ones, military road, belong to TDC, um and I have tried, as I know councillor Wing has, to try and find act, it just need to ascertain who those down lights belong to, has caused no end of.
The dolphin lights, the dolphin lights are ours, uh but the ones below, nobody, and they're all falling off. But I fully support this, I think we've got to acknowledge our businesses have had two years of utter, utter chaos. They are, they are, they are receiving rent increases which are well above anything that most businesses can sustain, so we could well see uh, uh businesses collapse, particularly on the Pyton's Estate, where, where rent increases are massive. It's shabby condition, so I think we have to do everything we can to try and bring in, to support our businesses as best we can.
Councillor Nicksey?
I have an electric bike.
So our businesses aren't having a weekly market, they're not getting a, a high street clean.
Parking charges.
Exactly, car parking charges, not giving free.
And we have a fair amount of money in our reserves.
It's just going. The station going on.
Councillor. Yes, actually, I was just about to say, can we, can we answer question one?
I think the, the proposal uh that best suits where we are at the moment, because it's been a bit, we're not going to get this done quickly, we're certainly not going to get it done this winter, which means we're going to be up for the election cycle next year, so I would go for recommendation number three, defer it for the new council to deal with at the earliest opportunity in twenty-three, twenty-four, even if this council has set some budget for it, the actual mechanics of it, they're going to be the next.
Okay, do I have a second on that?
Seconded.
Okay. Um so, so the, the proposal is uh that the committee, basically one on three, the committee would wish to, for the project to proceed, but deferred until twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four. Uh so in other words, the next council elected in May twenty-twenty-three. Who's in favour? Four. And against? Okay, so that, that's fallen. Um do I have any other proposal?
Those one and two, Chair.
So number two.
With the, with the addition that we approach the businesses to cover the running costs.
Okay, so I've got proposed from um councillor Green for effectively number one and number two on this list, seconda. Councillor Nicksey, those in favour? And anyone against? Okay, so that's carried. Thank you. Right, I get to turn my page now, I tried to, to do that, didn't I? Community ad update, um to receive a report from the digital communication and marketing, marketing officer on the community ad magazine, which Eileen uh next to me is going to present.
Um thanks, Chair. This is a report from Dean. Um basically, uh we have three additions left of the community ad uh till issue forty, um covers November to December, issue forty-one will cover January to February, and issue forty-two, March to April. So that's three additions to the end of the financial year. Unfortunately, um community ad um sent an email, um and I, I'll read it out to you. As, as you know, we have had print increases of up to seventy percent. I am trying to find ways of resolving these costs, but like everyone else, I'm finding it difficult, and I'm also experiencing rising costs on the distribution as well, so unfortunately I'm going to have to raise the cost to you by thirty percent. This in uh, in fact, works out at six hundred and fifty-three pounds and sixty-one pence to take us to the end of the financial year. Um and Dean is asking if we can via that full amount from the marketing budget to the community ad budget to cover the increase in printing costs. Um the marketing um budget is healthy, um has not been spent, so it's three, three thousand pounds in there, so it can be used for that if you wish, thank you.
Councillor Green?
I do know that printing costs have gone through the roof, absolutely through the roof, so I would propose the recommendation.
Seconded, thank you. All in favour?
Can I ask a question? No, sorry, being awkward.
After you, trying to stop, yes, okay.
Um, I mean, is it actually worth, is it worth the money? I'm only asking a question, I just thought, is it worth the money? Is, do we get a response? Do we get, what, what do, what does the town council get out of the ad magazine, and what do the residents get from it? So I, I'm just uh bowing down to people who know more than, more than I do, so.
If members don't mind, I'd, I'd like to make my comment. Um I actually do think that there is um a value as far as the community is concerned, because this is one of the things that we do, it reaches out to all of the wards and goes beyond the town centre.
I know, I know that, but I was just asking, is it, is it worth?
Well. The, the impact from additional issues, um so far as indicated that there is not a, a massive change from increasing the circulation. Um yeah, I mean, I don't know what is the return and how do we measure it apart from what we've got here?
I guess that's the question I was asking.
Do we think it's worth it? Do I think it's worth it as a resident to receive it? Councillor?
I, I hear people talking and they say about the community magazine, or did you see something? So people do read them and get information and exchange news, so I do think it's, it's quite interesting.
Yeah. So Eileen, you want to add something?
The Ramsgate magazine has actually been used and shown as an exemplary example and to further councils, I don't know where these places are, but Wickford Town Council and Ingatestone and Fryer and Incarriage Council have had, actually looked at our um community ad magazine and taken up.
The river towards the city, around the top.
Oh, right, very much.
Um before we, before we go any further on this debate, we have actually already um had it proposed up and it been voted, so are you happy for us to move on?
Oh, absolutely, I'll, I'll even ask you.
Yeah, um so, did, did you want to add anything, councillor Green?
Well, I, I think the Chair's got a good point, so perhaps we could use the remaining issues of the magazine to try and specifically get some feedback to us. On the problem.
Councillor?
Maybe we could do a little survey.
Is it because you're not getting money?
I'm at the moment.
Okay.
Actually, I do get one.
Pass that on to Dean to look at, yes, if you don't mind, councillor Green.
Yeah, of course.
Okay, so um item eight, um.
I do get grassroots.
I can't find that.
Item eight, to consider a motion that is not in writing and is not before you, from councillor Crittenden, that Ramsgate Town Council acquired the East Cliff Bandstand by purchase or asset transfer from TDC. Um we had a meeting here with um uh a member of the community group that has recently been set up, and um the Ramsgate um John Moore. Ramsgate society, that's the word that won't have gone out of my head. Um there has been, an application has been put in for the East Cliff Bandstand to be listed as an asset of community value. We haven't had the um outcome of that yet, but that is expected next week. Um in the discussion that we had uh the last week, I think it was, and you were there as well.
I was.
Um, the conclusion that we came to was that the, the best outcome um as far as we could see, was that uh Ramsgate Town Council would approach Fannick District Council to acquire East Cliff Bandstand, um preferably by transfer, um but to see what uh deals or whatever come out of that conversation. Um and that basically, I'm sorry, it's not worded in a nice motion phrase, but that's basically is, is the proposal that is.
Yeah, if I could, if I could just say that, that the whole um emails between the town, the, the town clerk and myself, to the chicken jacket, it was started because of the, that bandstand, so everything was grown and everything was put around that for, for what we wanted to get, so that's why we've asked for meetings with them, so that we could discuss the transfer that, maybe the lift, etcetera, etcetera, so um I, I think that that, that's, that's important, I'd, I'd certainly support it, obviously.
Hmm. I, I have, I have three and a half years' worth of emails asking um TDC to do something about the condition of the bandstand. And nothing's changed. Councillor Green?
I just have a little quibble about the wording of what we would be agreeing. I'd much prefer to say, negotiate with TDC around acquiring the East Cliff Bandstand.
Absolutely fine. I, I haven't actually got a, 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 a motion wording in front of me, so I'm more than happy for, for that to be. Yep.
Councillor Wing?
I fully support this, and I do know that an asset, uh, uh, an, an asset of community value has also been a, applied for, for the war wreck. The one and a few areas where we, where we, where we're able to uh perhaps look at e- extending our, our, our facilities for, for young people, which are woeful. Uh I mean, woeful's too kind a word, I think. Uh can we throw the war wreck into the mix and begin negotiations to try and take that area of land as well? Because we know there's money out there that we can, we can apply for.
We've already, we've already done that.
We, we've already got a, a proposal in with regard to the skate park area of the war wreck, so we have, I think we have to deal with that.
Okay. I think, I think, I don't think we can tack something else onto East Cliff Bandstand. I would just add.
We have to forecast.
But the, but the ACV for the East Cliff Bandstand does include the dance floor and the, the, the general surrounding areas, so it isn't literally just.
No, it's band, it is the ground.
Yes.
And I would need to double check, because councillor Green has um been pointing out to me recently the absolute horrendous state of the, the metal railings around it, but I think the railings are included within that as well. Um and again, they are, they haven't been touched in, in years, so.
Does have the scope to generate an income.
Well, exactly, we, we would need, uh I mean, once, once, once we had acquired the bandstand, we would need all the appropriate business plans and everything else, but we know that there are um groups in the community that want to make use of it. Um the Ramsgate Society are the ones who have actually put in the ACV on our behalf, um or, well, not on our behalf, but they've done it after discussion with us.
Yeah.
So um I, I had a discussion with them, and John went straight away and did it, so for that I'm very grateful. Um so are we in agreement? So can we have a wording of a motion?
Um I don't know if you want to say the town clerk and the Chair or to negotiate or.
I think, I would say, I would say for Ramsgate Town Council to negotiate with Fannick District Council to acquire the bandstand.
Yeah, of course. Councillor Green has around, around acquiring, which makes it broader, I think. The.
And then if we're not, yep.
On the community asset basis.
Well, it'll be, it will be a community asset by the time, uh than the next week or so, hopefully.
Second.
Okay, um seconda? And councillor Nicksey? And all in favour? Hmm, I think that was a hundred percent there. Okay, thank you very much. Um okay, so the next item on the agenda is the compress. Um we have uh.
Proposed, proposed that we do.
Thank you.
Seconded.
Seconded, all in favour?